To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting was noticed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This commission acts in review and recommending capacity for comprehensive plan amendments, text amendments to the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations ordinance, rezonings, and plan developments. The commission has decision-making authority on road name change requests, public project reviews, appeals of administrative decisions on final plaits and subdivision matters, as well as other matters pursuant to Chapter 29, Title VI, Section 6-29-340 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended. If you wish to speak at today's meeting, you should have signed up.[56.78][56.78](Laughter). I'm Cindy Floyd. I'm Chair of the Commission. To my right, we have Commissioners Pete Palatas, Luke Morris, Gary LaSane, and Adam McConnell. To my left, we have David Kent, Lori Jones, Logan Davis, and Susan Cox. Also seated to my right is Attorney Mark Bell, and to my left, Joel Evans, Director of Planning and Zoning. Would you introduce your staff, Joel?
Sure. Andrea Melisegway, the Deputy Director. Marsha Miller, she will be giving the presentation for the case tonight. Wynne Carlisle. Stephanie Ondo. Monica Eustace. Kyle Foster, the county's arborist, is here. Also, Carrie Vache, and not in my department, but Eric Davis with Green Belt and Affordable Housing is here as well, in case you have questions with that.
I would like to remind you that in order to get a good recording of the meeting for the minutes, please speak loudly and clearly into your microphones, and please do not talk over one another. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 14, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion and a second?
There's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Andrea, the monitors aren't working up here.
Okay, call the roll, please. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSane?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Upstate.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatas?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
The next item on the agenda is a request to rezone text map number 215000030, 215000163, and 256000120, from the PD number 83A and AG zoning districts to Orange Hill Plan Development, PD 191, a zoning district, in conjunction with a development agreement request. Marsha Miller will give the presentation.
Good afternoon. So, as stated, we are rezoning parcels 21500030, 215000163, and 256000120, from PD 83A and AG 8 zoning districts to the Orange Hill Plan Development, PD 191. This parcel is located on Johns Island, and it is a total of 933.097 acres. It does include approximately 628 acres of highland and 304 freshwater wetlands. There is the track, the parcel ending in 120 is known as the conservancy tract, and that parcel is the only development allowed on the conservancy tract pursuant to the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants for Wetland Preservation is a single dwelling structure. Now, in 2001, parcels 030 and 163 were one parcel. It was a 721-acre parcel. However, all of the parcels involved in this development were zoned agricultural general AG, but upon the adoption of the November 2001 ZLDR, it was rezoned to AG 8. And then, in April of 2002, council approved the rezoning of parcel 030, which at that time still included parcel 163 from AG 8 zoning district to the Orange Hill Plan Development, PD 83. PD 83 did allow for 181 single-family residences on 721 acres, and it also had 420 acres of open space, a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, and it allowed for a wastewater treatment facility, and the main access was off Bow Hicket Road. So, in 2005, county council approved a request to amend PD 83 to PD 83A. The request did not include any changes to the number of dwelling units, overall density, minimum lot width, or the 100-foot buffer along Bow Hicket Road that was approved along with the original PD. However, they did approve to allow the minimum lot area to decrease from 20,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet, and they allowed for an additional use for the reverse osmosis plant. And then, in 2006, parcel 030 was subdivided to create parcel 0163. And then, it also, it was subdivided to create eight lots at the River Road entrance of parcel 030. Sorry. And then, in November of 2006, an application was submitted to amend PD 83A to PD 83B. The amendment request included parcels TMS 030, 163, those eight lots, 165 to 172, and then two additional parcels, 256000120, and 259000087. All of the parcels were zoned PD 83A at that time, except for 120 and 087, which were zoned AG 8. Now, this PD did ask for the total lot area, or the total area of the PD to be increased to 1,095.16, for the dwelling units to increase to 274, and then for an increase in the, I'm sorry, the develop, the minimum lot size was an increase from 15,000 square feet to 21,780 square feet. Primary entrance still on Bow Hicket, and then, I mean, the primary entrance on Bow Hicket and two construction entrances on River Road. Now, it also asks for removal of the golf course and the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. However, in January of 2007, the property owner of the parcel ending in 087 withdrew the parcel from the proposed PD 83B, and then shortly thereafter, it was administratively withdrawn. Then, in 2008, Kiowa Resort Associates obtained ownership of parcels 030, 163, and 120, and then they later obtained ownership of 165 through 172 in 2002. Then, those parcels through the subdivision process was combined with parcel 030 in 24. Now, the applicant did have two conceptual PD development plan presentations. One was held July 10 of 2003, and the second was held February 10 of 2025, 2025, I'm sorry. Now, we're going to move into the, this request is in conjunction with a development agreement, and the South Carolina state law says that two public hearings are required. The length of agreement is dependent on the size of the property, has to have consistency with the comp plan and land development regulations, developer receives vested rights for the term of the agreement, to proceed according to land use regulations in existence at the time of the agreement, and it must be reviewed by the zoning administrator every 12 months, and may be amended or canceled by mutual consent of the parties of the agreement or by their successors in interest. Now, the Orange Hill proposed development agreement is proposed to be between Kiowa Resort Associates and Charleston County, is for a term of agreement of 10 years unless it's extended by the agreement of both parties, and it also includes all proposed regulations in the plan development that accompanies this agreement, and there are proposed modifications to the ZLDR, especially regarding tree protection and preservation requirements, plan development requirements, and road construction requirements, and also the ability for them to have one conditional plat, which would be based on the wastewater treatment facility and a provision of public water. They are also included in the development agreement. So, also included in the development agreement, the property owner shall design and construct the left turn lane on River Road at the primary entrance, subject to permitting from the DOT and the county's approval of any trees that may need to be removed or encroached upon in the scenic road right of way or buffer. The property owner shall provide to the Charleston County Community Development and Revitalization Department 1 million over five years at 200,000 per year. The fund shall be held in escrow for the preservation of existing dwelling units and development of workforce dwelling units and affordable dwelling units. The property owner also will pay a flat fee of $4,166.67 to Charleston County Community Development Revitalization Department for the development costs associated with Sea Island Habitat for Humanity Inc.'s Affordable Housing Initiatives at the time of each first-generation closing to a third-party person or entity that is not affiliated with the property owner or is with, which the property owner wholly owns or controls such entity. These payments will be made up to a cap of $500,000, representing 120 first-generation lot sales. They also will pay $215,000, approximately 50% of the cost of a fully-equipped ambulance, once 50% of the dwelling units receive certificates of occupancy to support public safety. And then, the property owner will pay $450,000, which is approximately 50% of the cost of a new fire engine apparatus with the payment made once 50% of occupancies are built or completed during the development of the project to support the St. John's Fire District. Also, they are proposing to change the protected tree definition as, that's shown here on the screen. And then, they are also requesting approval to remove or encroach upon grand trees and protected trees, as shown on Exhibit 14.1, through the development agreement without requiring approval of the BZA, and then, but requiring mitigation, and the mitigation as follows. This mitigation is required for trees that are removed, but it does not apply to trees that are encroached upon. Grade A and B trees, mitigation must be on an inch-per-inch basis with a minimum of two-and-a-half inches caliber trees. And grade C trees, zoning and planning director to determine if mitigation is required based on tree condition. Mitigation trees may be planted onsite or offsite on Johns Island or through payment into a tree fund created for planting trees on Johns Island. And then, trees encroached upon by more than 25% must be monitored by an arborist for at least five years, and if they do not survive, must be mitigated as outlined above. This table is showing a summary of the grand and protected trees proposed to be removed through the development agreement, as shown in Exhibit 14.1. And then, four trees that are not requesting, that are not being requested through, to be removed or encroached upon through the development agreement, mitigation, BZA approval is required for the removal of grand and protected trees. Encroachments for up to 35% of the protected area may be allowed when the zoning and planning director approves a tree preservation plan submitted by the applicant and developed by a certified arborist. BZA approval is required for encroachments of more than 35% of the protected area, and the ARB may approve the removal of encroachment upon replacement protection, preservation, and mitigation requirements for all other trees that are not grand or protected trees. All right. So now, we will move into the Orange Hill Plan Development Request. Before I move into that, I do want to say that the Planning Commission does not make a recommendation on the development agreement, but they do make a recommendation to council for the plan development. So, this is the parcels in the county as a whole, and the future land use for this parcel designation is rural agricultural. In the current zoning, the subject parcels that are currently zoned PD 83A, 030, and 163, 163 is undeveloped, and 030 is developed with a trap and skeet shooting range, which is allowed under the current PD 83A zoning. The subject parcel ending in 120 is zoned agricultural AGA and undeveloped. Adjacent parcels are within Charleston County and primarily zoned agricultural residential and rural agricultural, with single-family residences, manufactured housing units, or they are vacant. Parcel 213000090 to the south is zoned AGR and houses the St. John's Fire Station. Subject properties are located in flood zone shaded X and X. This is an aerial view of the parcel, of the subject properties. And here are photos of the subject property from the Bow Hicket Road entrance and also from the River Road entrance. And these are photos of the proposed location for the clubhouse site and then also the Power Eastman. This is the current PD 83A master plan, and this plan shows the residential lots in orange. It also shows the buffers for River Road at 100 feet and also for Bow Hicket Road at 100 feet. The perimeter buffers differ along the property from between 50 feet to 100 feet, and this also shows the primary entrance off of Bow Hicket Road. This is the proposed PD 191 master plan, and this look, this one is showing that the primary entrance is going to be off of River Road. There's an emergency access off of Bow Hicket, and there's a 75-foot buffer type I along Bow Hicket and River Road. It also shows the conservancy tract, and that the minimum perimeter buffer is 10 feet, and it's type A, except where noted on the site, the master plan here, and that would be near the wetlands, up near Bow Hicket, is reduced to an eight-foot type A buffer for 300 feet, and then you have down, along the maintenance area, increased to 25-foot type D buffer along the maintenance area in the location of the farmer's market and restaurant. This is a comparison of the land uses. So, the current PD allows 181 single-family residences, and in the proposed PD, it has been reduced to 120 dwelling units. So, going forward, density, one dwelling unit per 7.8 acres here. And then, we have our open space requirements, where they are proposing a golf course, which is also allowed in the current PD as well. And then, we also have listed the accessory land uses to the golf course, which include the food sales, the restaurant, and the other uses listed here. There is no preservation tract in PD 83A. However, in PD 91, 191, they have a maximum acreage for a preservation tract of 16 acres. It's not to exceed 61 tenants in common, and it shall comply with Section 8.31F of the modified ZLDR, which refers to the non-buildable lot standards. And this is subject to der restriction or conservation easement that prohibits development and requires the preservation tract to remain in a natural state. Wastewater treatment plant to serve only the development, reverse osmosis plant, and the club and HOA support and maintenance services are the utility services, uses that are included in the proposed zoning, and this will take up a maximum of 12 acres, keeping in mind that wastewater treatment plant and reverse osmosis is allowed in the current PD. So, in the current PD, we, the farmer's market and restaurant, community garden and greenhouse is not included. However, in PD 191, it is included. The farmer's market and restaurant will be near River Road entrance, and then the community garden and greenhouse near the Bow Hicket entrance. Short-term rentals are allowed in the proposed PD. No more than 68 commercial guest house, short-term rental properties are permitted, and this is shown in Exhibit 15.1. Special exception approval from the BZA shall not be required, and ARB approval letter is required stating the approval of the dwelling unit as a short-term rental property and a parking plan that will be enforced by the ARB. And then, these are additional land uses that will be allowed. There will be the trap and skeet shooting, which is currently allowed. You have resource extraction and mining only for construction activity on the site, and the outdoor shooting range as well. And there will be remote parking lot and overnight vehicle storage for owners and members for major activities, whether onsite or offsite. All right. So now, we're moving into the comparison of density, intensity, and dimensional standards. So, the minimum lot area is 15,000 square feet in the current PD. There is an overall mix of lots being proposed, which will include approximate minimums, which are listed here on the screen. And then, the Bow Hicket Road buffer is going to be, it was 100 feet, but it's going to 75 type I buffer, and River Road was 100 feet, and it is now also a 75-foot type I buffer. And then, as we spoke about the perimeter buffer earlier. Internal buffers will be determined by the ARB, and there is a reduction in the front setbacks to 10 feet, interior side setback to 5 feet, and the rear setback to 15 feet. And then, the maximum building height is 40 feet, and then there is an allowance for 47 feet to the crown of the storage tank within the utility tract. There are other requested PD guidelines. So, for parking, all roads will be private, and the development will be gated, and parking must comply with the requirements of the modified ZLDR. Main project access from River Road, control access from Bow Hicket Road for the utility maintenance and the support services area, and there'll be gated access from Bow Hicket for emergency services. Only signs visible from Bow Hicket and River Road must be, must comply with the modified ZLDR. They have to be monumental style and landscape lit, and only subdivision signs and temporary directional signs for construction and emergency entrances are allowed. ARB shall determine the requirements for all internal signage. Architectural guidelines of the modified ZLDR apply only to non-residential buildings, but the ARB shall develop and administer the architectural guidelines for the rest of the property. Must, the lighting must comply with modified ZLDR. In addition, the ARB will require compliance with dark-skies standards, and the development schedule, this lists the phases in which the development will occur. And they must comply with the stormwater and drainage. And special assemblies and special events, special events on properties owned by the club that do not exceed a daily attendance of 750 do not require zoning permit. Daily attendance greater than 750 requires a zoning permit. Special events on all other properties must comply with the modified ZLDR. And then, all development requires a letter of coordination from the ARB. So, the applicants did reply to all the applicable criteria, and for criteria A, staff found that if the development agreement, which includes the modified ZLDR, is approved by county council, the application will be consistent with the standards of the modified plan development zoning district article, therefore, the criteria may be met. And then, for criterion B, criteria B, if it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, staff does find that the subject parcel is recommended for the rural agricultural future land use, in that the, that land, that future land use designation allows up to one dwelling unit per eight acres. The proposed zoning district will allow up to one dwelling unit per point, 7.8 acres with wetlands included, and one dwelling unit per 5.2 acres without wetlands. Now, while the future land use density recommendation is currently one dwelling per eight acres, at the time the PD 83A was approved, the density range for the FLU category was dwelling unit per eight to one dwelling unit per four. And the, with the wetlands and without the wetlands, the proposed density fits within those calculations. Additionally, there is a reduction in the units from 181 to 120, and the proposed PD does comply with other sections of the comprehensive plan, therefore, this criterion may be met. This, the criteria C is met because the applicant provided required letters of coordination, and they will, if needed, they will provide updated letters of coordination with the subsequent development applications as well. And the letter from CCSD states Mount Zion Elementary will moderately impact until a new school is built or zoning occurs. Because the approval criteria may have been met, staff recommends approval. We received 106 comments in support, 10 comments in opposition, and six general comments as of May 8. And then, this was, this request was noticed as required, and that is it. Thank you.
Any questions for the staff?
Should we be talking before?
Do your microphone.
Before we address the PD, should we be talking about the development agreement?
You can make comments on the development agreement, but it will not be part of the record of your recommendation for the plan development.
I understand. I have two questions. The amount of money that is required from the developer to be paid to the county and other entities, how was that amount determined? And secondly, and it just occurred to me, looking at this, the change in the protected tree legislation or ordinance, that's going to be incorporated in our regulations. Shouldn't there be a public hearing and the other procedure before we do, to adopt this into the ZLDR?
I'll try to answer the second part first. The ZLDR for, that is being proposed to be changed, the development agreement, only applies to this property. So, and the development agreement itself does have a public hearing requirement for that. That is, it's not changing for the rest of the county. It's only specific to this property.
Okay.
Right.
And the second question?
Oh.
First question?
The first, yeah. The amount of money that was requested by county staff that's in charge of that division of the county, it's not under the planning and zoning department, that was a specific request from that division, and Eric Davis is here. If you want any more specifics on that, he's actually in charge of that. Sorry, Eric. I know you want to just listen, but you might be able to speak, if you don't mind. Yeah.
Thank you, Joel. Eric Davis with the newly-formed Housing and Land Development, Land Management Department for Charleston County. Commissioner Jones, I wish I could tell you, or it might be nice to tell you that we had a very specific formula to come up with those figures for the housing side of things, but ultimately, it was just a good-faith negotiation with the applicant. We did look at some similar development agreements from the past, kind of compared where those came in, but then also recognized that since that time, county council, through their actions of adopting the Housing Our Future Plan, has placed a greater importance on affordable and workforce housing in the county. So, it was the negotiation, and they came in lower, we came in higher, and this is the result.
Well, that answers the question. I'm not sure it's satisfactory, but nevertheless, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, the applicants for this case have requested to make a short presentation before we hear the public comments. They will be allowed five minutes to do so.
Thank you all, and knowing we're on the shot clock here. My name is Jordan Phillips. I'm a partner with the applicant and want to introduce our team here. Ray Pantlick, our development director. Mark Pramar, our director of planning, and Trinam Walker is here from legal.
Thank you, Jordan. Madam Chair, members of the commission, staff, and those in attendance, we have very little to add to the comprehensive presentation by the staff. It was thorough. It was a result of considerable amount of time by everyone involved. I would suggest that it was a very collaborative approach, inclusive of the general public. We had two formal meetings in the public, and we had multiple other meetings with various public groups, and we tried very hard to listen in an effort to learn, and we did. But what I'd like to do is emphasize a couple of key points in the recommendation and the, in the presentation of how the proposal is different from the existing entitlements. So, the first slide that is up has a comparison between the graphic of the existing entitlements on the left, the proposed entitlements on the right. And to go through these in no particular order, because they each have their own particular weight, is a result of how we approach potential development or non-development by designing with nature. That's not a marketing term or a punch term, it's how we work. So, beginning in 2008, when the partners first purchased the property... So beginning in 2008, when the partners first purchased the property, there was no rush to develop any of it. We spent a long time just, quite frankly, simmering. We treated it like an outdoor studio, just getting familiar with it, different times of the year, different times of the day, the seasons. Each time, you see the same thing differently, and that builds knowledge. And what we did was to compare our early findings with what the existing entitled plan represented. And we understood the role of the golf course being placed where it is in the specific area, because that was an area that had certain areas that were not treed, not heavily treed. So it took the pressure off of clearing for the golf course. As we learned more, we engaged Bo Welling Design, one of the great golf course architects in the country, if not the world, who had a particular sense of how to position and locate a golf course within an area with a light touch, not an aggressive touch, because we knew that was needed. The other area that we reflected on was the proposed 181 dwelling units in the existing entitlement. We didn't have a specific number in mind, but what we noticed is those 181 dramatically impacted the site. As you can see, there were many large home sites, but more importantly, there were over seven miles of roadways to access that. And it was woven with the golf course. And we, that's a golf course type of the 90s, 80s and 90s, where you weave the residential with the golf course. It puts pressure on extension of infrastructure. Infrastructure impacts the natural environment in ways that we thought was inappropriate for this site. So we also heard from people that is, there's a way to reduce density that would be more appropriate with no number in mind. Through our actions, we've reduced the density from 181 to 120 home sites. But more importantly, even those 120 sites are more modest in size. So rather than dedicate a lot of the acreage to individual property owners, we reduced the home sites to more moderate sizes in deference to more acreage attributed to the natural framework. The natural framework actually becomes the, the plan of which development occurs within. The open space in that recreation area has increased dramatically. The road structure went from 7.2 miles to 4.4. The golf course is more dedicated to golf in a natural way rather than extended and integrated with the residential. The wastewater treatment plant of the existing entitlements was secondary, secondary treatment. We've proposed tertiary treatment in which we recycle the water to irrigate the golf course, inclusive of water runoff associated with the utility tract. And more importantly, because it's a very significant topic that we consistently hear, is in terms of tree removals, the existing entitlements would lead to about 945 trees removed within the core area. We're proposing a plan that would result in less than half of that, 418. Now, 418 still sounds like a lot of trees, but that is less than one tree per acre of high ground.
You've reached the five minute mark, so let's try to get this wrapped up.
The second slide and the last slide summarizes what we believe are the substantial differences between the existing entitlements and the proposed ones. In every one of these categories, we've tried to better in deference to retention of the natural framework with a modest touch to the ground. We've made choices here of relocating the principal access point from Bow Hicket Road to River Road in deference to taking traffic flow patterns off of Bow Hicket Road. In conclusion, Madam Chair and Commissioners, we believe that this designing with nature approach, which yields a much superior plan and a more sensitive plan for this area, is more consistent with what we believe and understand the long-range planning concepts are. And finally, an intangible, which is, we are developers, but what differentiates us from others is that we're community developers. We don't develop and then leave. We retain an involvement with the community for the duration. So we collaborate with the evolution of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do the, any commissioners have questions for the applicants?
My sort of a flip question, as a amateur golfer and not very good. Is this going to be a hard course? I appreciate that you've tried to design the course to minimize the cutting down of trees. But as the, as a consequence, do we have narrow fairways? And people like me would probably go somewhere else because we'd come across a tree in the way wherever it was?
This is a great question for me, because I'm a high handicap. The best way I can answer this is this would be a course that would allow for people of all play levels to feel comfortable playing. It's not intended to be a tight course or a wide course. It's intended to be a coordinated course of where the Ts are in terms of what, how you hit. So it, that's the best way I can answer this. It's, it's a course that would appeal to a broad range of people, golfers at different levels.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I've said this before, whenever you've come, I think this is a vast improvement on what the current PD is. But, so my question isn't really going to change my opinion, but it is just out of, you know, concern for it. The short-term rental option for the 68, I saw that the club will basically be running it and that you're capped out on that. Did the traffic impact study, and I would assume most of the traffic would be coming south towards Kiowa. Did the traffic impact study have, take that into consideration, the short-term rental potential for up to 60 of these home sites?
It, it does. It takes that into account. And as you pointed out, the tendency in terms of the traffic flow patterns would be to the south, toward the beach and toward Kiowa property in terms of relationships. The other thing that I would suggest is short-term rentals is a capability. We concentrated those in a very specific area, which is a five-minute walk distance to the clubhouse. So people won't be prone to getting into their cars to drive to the clubhouse. But I hope I answered the question, though.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Valdez?
So staying on the topic of short-term rentals, this, this development is part of the private Kiowa Island Club? Is that?
That's correct.
So the short-term rentals, are they available to the general public? Or is it only for club members and their guests?
They're only available to club members and their guests. It's managed by the club, so it's not, it's not open advertising to the general public. And when you are, when you rent one of the, one of the cottages, you're sponsored, you're either sponsored or you are a club member. What we, our pattern is, because we have some of these at Casique right now. We have experience with the short-term rental. And usually, it's an extension of an existing club member who's coming from out of town for golf outing for their group. But it's all in-house, it's not to the general public.
None will be like on VRBO or any of the sites?
No.
So it should be lesser impact?
This would be an example of our continuing role after we sell property of being part of the community. And that would be managed by the club, which is owned by the partners.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now we'll hear from the public.
Thank you very much.
I think you need to stand, you might need to stand.
Martin Myers?
Okay, I'm Martin Meyer, living at 4476 River Road, right at the back of this track. Right now, the property is under conservation easement hours. Every morning or every afternoon, there's three eagles at this time that come light on the light poles I've got set up for amateur radio operators and scouts as welcome 365 days a year around the pond. And right now, Briars Creek and back behind the Catholic Church on Betsy Carson, someone has cut the trees down that were nesting trees for the eagles. And this is what's going to be going on in that track. Because right now, they're going to the left from my house and to the right. And I need somebody to be in there that's not a developer and possibly not on the planning committee, because they're not going to look at the facts. All they're going to be looking at is the money coming across. And right now, there's three eagles, two adults and a young one. It was just, this last year. It hadn't even turned its colors yet. And I see that morning and afternoon, and I saw them this morning, the adult this morning sitting on the last hole before I came in.
Sir?
And people don't realize that when they put up these houses, they are cutting the wildlife habitat down the zilch.
So are the eagle, the trees with the eagles, or is that on your property or on this, on the Orange Hill property?
I'm pretty sure they nesting somewhere on Orange Hill.
Okay.
But just like the ones that was nesting over in Briars Creek, they cut the tree down for houses. So they left and they over on the Orange Hill side now.
Okay, right, thank you.
But we need somebody that is honest, not looking at a dollar that they can make tomorrow. And I've been on that island since 43, other than the 28 years I had in the military.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, did you want to talk again as a general?
Okay.
Jordan? Sorry, I'll say the last names.
Amanda, Trinum Walker?
Madam Chair, members of the commission. Trinum Walker, I've worked the last three years with the applicant and with planning staff to bring this plan plus the development agreement to you. We've spent a lot of time going through provisions since our informational hearing three months ago because of a number of questions asked and count, excuse me, staff rightly pointed out that there were some omissions and we needed further definition on things. And so we've worked very hard to do that. Based on the comments, I would like to respond to Ms. Myers, because we are very big on eagles too. KRA has dealt with eagles on Casique. We deal with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We enforce the protected zones. And to the extent there are any eagles there, they will be protected. And the building will occur when allowed by federal law. There will be no disturbance that, that we, we will make sure there's no disturbance. Let me speak to three things that Mark didn't speak to. The first is the request, which is unusual, for approval to remove certain trees ahead of time. That is an approval that would allow the construction of the golf course and the major roads. It's not for later development. Later development, any grand trees, of course, would have to come back to the BZA. The other thing I would like to speak to are the STRs. And I think we got some clarification there. They're only going to be available to members of the club. Also, as Mark was saying, the traffic, we think, is going to be primarily to the south. And all of this, we would suggest to you means that this proposed plan that has smaller lots, more open space, less in the way of roads, and overall far more protected area is a much better solution and actually a good solution for this property. And we ask your recommendation of approval. Last thing I want to say is to thank staff for the hard work that you all put in with us to help us bring this along.
Any questions for the speaker from the commissioners?
Who will be the person or the entity responsible for checking out the eagles? To make sure that they are not nesting there?
That's U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, and what's the procedure for you contacting them? Or how does that work?
Since I haven't called them, I'm going to ask Ray, who's dealt, he's our, he's the person who's dealt with Fish and Wildlife. Ray Pantlick, who's director of development.
As Trinum mentioned, we, we're very familiar with nesting pairs at the Casique development. There have been a series of nests there in the last 15 years. And, and what we have typically done, we've sought an eagle take permit, not, not to harm the eagle or anything like that, but that's what the procedures call, call for. And what it mandates then is we get a qualified eagle biologist to come monitor each season. A lot of people don't realize, but it, that season of monitoring begins on October 1, and it runs all the way through May 16. And so we've got much experience with that. Two years ago, we, we did learn of an eagle nest that is on the conservancy tract. And the standard zone of clearing, or not clearing, but no disturbance is 660 feet. Where that eagle nest exists, or did exist, is outside of any planned disturbance from our plan.
So when you talk about the disturbance, are you saying that you're only observing them on these periods of time when they might be nesting? And outside of that, you might cut down their nests? Is that what you mean?
No.
Okay.
But that, but that's the, I was simply describing the National Eagle Management Guidelines published by Fish and Wildlife Service. And to the extent that others seek permits, it sort of formalizes that reporting. And this year, with our Casique nest, there was two juveniles that were born. And they've had many, many a year of successful nesting. They do, there's high fidelity between the nesting pairs. They'll return to a particular tree. We've even seen them move just 50 feet to a different tree. And, and so the one that we have identified at this property, as I said, was, is in the conservancy tract, well away from any proposed disturbance.
Okay, but there will be another survey prior to any tree removal being done here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
John Zlogar, did you? Okay, all right. And just for the record, John Zlogar yielded his time to Mike McShane.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Director of Evans Commission. I'm Mike McShane, resident of 1501 Ravens Point Road. I'm John Allen. I'm here first for the clarification record. I'm the former chairman of DNR and a current member of the advisory committee of the Secretary of Interior. I'll make sure somebody understands this in a positive way, Mr. Walker. I'll make sure you get all the resources you need to check on that. I will. But yes, sir, I'll be happy to make, I'll make the commission make sure that there's well, well understood on that front. I'm representing the John Allen Task Force. The Task Force is a collective group of residents and interests on the island. And I will say upfront, this applicant has really, in my view, set a new standard about collaboration with vested interest parties. They've been very collaborative in understanding and solicitous of our interests. They've reduced the number of densities. They've changed the interests off, off Bow Hicket Road on the River Road. They've heard our conversations about the A and B graded trees. We've asked for them to continue to be, consider that surgical consideration versus just any other, just wide approach. So that as, even though they, as they work through their process, if they see an opportunity to preserve an A or B tree, we've asked them to give consideration. And I've been assured that that will always be something they will take under consideration. We've asked on those trees that are encroached on, that there be long-term monitoring on those A and B trees as well. those A and B trees as well, and that I had assurance that they, that is part of their process that they would be doing so. And in terms of the mitigation of dollars to go to a tree fund for those trees that are sacrificed, we'd like to see that, that that, that money be invested back on the island, and that perhaps members of the community could be part of that process of decision on how that money is spent and where those trees are placed, along with the applicant on that. Outside that, the Task Force was satisfied that the applicant has been diligent in their collaboration, and we certainly stand ready to be, continue to be a resource with that. And the final note is I'll make sure that I get that information promptly to my contacts. There is a eagle specialist with DNR, and as well as within the Fish and Wildlife Service.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McShane?
So in the presentation, it said mitigated, mitigation trees may be planted onsite or offsite on Johns Island and through payment into a tree fund created for planting trees on Johns Island. Does that satisfy what you just spoke to?
I think in general, it would, the concept does satisfy. We'd ask that maybe consideration that some of the community members in and around there participate in that process of where those trees and get planted if it's offsite. You've got resources of arborists and forest landowners who could be helpful.
Put that as a condition?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Evans has just told, told me that we can put that as a condition on the approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Case is now closed to public comment. Is there a motion and a second from the commission?
Motion to approve with the condition that Mr. Evans is referring to.
Second.
Second.
Can you clarify that condition, please?
Yes, I think from the comment, it sounded like Mr. McShane was saying that there's tree mitigation involved, as everyone knows, for this project. The trees can be either planted on the site where the golf course is located, or, or offsite, or funds be offsite on Johns Island, or funds be put into the tree fund. I think that the ask is that if there are trees are planted offsite, or if trees are, or if money for trees in the tree fund gets put toward trees to be planted somewhere, that all that be done on Johns Island, and that there be someone from representing Johns Island, I would expect today it would be someone from the Task Force that would be involved as to where those trees would be planted on the island.
So is the Task Force, are they nominating themselves to adhere to that responsibility?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else from the commission? Okay, I'm going to call the roll.
There was a first and second.
There was a first and second, yeah. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lasain?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it. County Council will hear this request at two separate public hearings, June 10, 2025 at 6:30 p.m. and July 22, 2025 at 6:30 p.m., both in council chambers. It will also be heard at their June 17, 2025 Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at 5 p.m. The request must then undergo three readings for approval at council's discretion. Is there any further business? There's no further business. This meeting of Charleston County Planning Commission stands adjourned, and our next meeting is June 9, 2025 at 2 p.m. here in council chambers. Okay, well, now we get to tell them where to plant trees.